Okay, good photo opportunity.
Lock the door.
Make sure everyone unused their microphones.
All right.
Unmuted.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Somerville Board of Education meeting of January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements of results of election. Results of the annual election held on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two certified by the Somerset County Clerk determined the following candidates were elected for three-year terms. Mateo Garcia, two thousand and fifty-nine votes. Dan Carlson, one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight votes. And Luke Sergiel, one thousand six hundred and eighty-one votes. At this point, I'd like to administer the oath of office to the newly-elected board members and the one-appointed board member. I would like to begin, I'm gonna go with ladies first, and begin with Mrs. Fabrizi. Mrs. Fabrizi, will you join me at the podium?
Sir.
You want the inside or the outside? I don't remember.
Have you got it?
Okay.
I'll put it on the screen.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Kristen Fabrizi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Kristen Fabrizi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, will you join me at the podium? I state your name.
I, Mateo Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Mateo Garcia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. Mr. Carlson, will you please join me at the podium? I state your name.
I, Dan Carlson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Dan Carlson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of the board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
And that I am not disqualified as voter pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. Mr. Sergiel.
Yes, Mr. Boyce.
Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Lucien Sergiel Junior.
Do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Luke Sergiel Junior.
Do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Sergiel. Try me again. Okay, at this point, we're ready to take a roll call of members. Mrs. Van Horn.
Here.
Mr. Sergiel.
Present, sir.
Mr. Jess.
Here.
Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Mr. Pontilla.
Here.
Mrs. Kraska.
Here.
Mrs. Dale.
Here.
Mrs. Sherwin.
Here.
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Here.
Public notice. Adequate notice of this meeting in compliance with Chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five entitled The Open Public Meetings Act has been provided by action of the Board of Education at its regular meeting on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Notices to the Courier-News and Star-Ledger circulated in the school district and posted notice to this effect on the Board of Education website and bulletin board. Administrative Headquarters, fifty-one West Cliff Street, Somerville, New Jersey. Next order of business for tonight will be the election of board president. At this time, I would like to seek nominations for Board of Education president.
Mr. Boyce, I nominate Derek Jess, please.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close nominations for Board of Education president?
Motion. I second.
I'll go with Dan Carlson and Luke Sergiel. We saw that the Board of Education elects Mr. Derek Jess as president of the Board of Education effective immediately until the next organization meeting as prescribed by law. Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
I abstain.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mrs. Dale.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwin.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
I abstain.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Jess.
Thank you. I don't know if I should be excited or... Just say you're all gonna get... I know. Thank you, Mr. Boyce, and my fellow board members. I appreciate your confidence in me, and I know that this year we're gonna do some really, really good things. At this time, may I have a nomination for a candidate for the position of board vice president, please?
I'm Denise Van Horn.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the nominations, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pontilla. Mr. Boyce, we do roll call, please.
Sure. We saw that the Board of Education elects Mrs. Denise Van Horn as president of the Board of Education effective immediately until the next organization meeting as prescribed by law. As vice president as prescribed by law. Mrs. Van Horn.
I abstain.
Mr. Sergiel.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mrs. Dale.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwin.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
I abstain.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
All right. Moving on, and if you've already looked at the agenda, we... Mr. Boyce has made some changes to it, so we're combining the public session regarding agenda items and non-agenda items. So at this time, we will ask if any member of the public would like to speak to any item regarding agenda items. Well, now we're gonna do agenda items first.
Okay.
So, seeing none, now I'll ask if there's a... Oh, yes, please.
Good evening. Mayor Dennis Sullivan, twenty-five West End Avenue. Speaking in an official capacity tonight. First, I'd like to congratulate the newly-seeded board members. And as well as the existing board members, I wish you a very successful year. Our new officers, I congratulate you as well for working for stuff up in a leadership position. Great deal of optimism in town right now, and the school system is no small part of that. And I know it very well from years as a staff person and as a parent. So I wish you continued success with the youth of our community. That's why we all do the jobs we do. Now, a small bit of housekeeping. The Somerville Library Board of Trustees is allowed to have a representative from the school. And with the leaving of the superintendent, I assume that position has not been decided upon for this year. And so, Mr. Boyce, could you figure out how we get a representative from the Board of Education and communicate with Mr. Sluka? Our first meeting is at the end of January, so if we could get someone on our agenda for two weeks from yesterday, that would be good. And if not, February with you as well. But the position is important, we meet four times a year. And I think you'll agree with me that the public library is an important asset to supplement the school libraries as well. So I look forward to working with, you know, that new person as well. And to Mrs. Kraska, I look forward to working with you as our liaison. Mr. Vroom is gonna still be our liaison to you. So he'll have some continuity there. Again, I look forward to working with you on items of mutual interest. So have a great two thousand and twenty-three. And if there's anything you need from borough offices, let us know.
Thank you, Your Honor, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to ask if anyone would like to speak to non-agenda-related items. Please.
Danny Tip Reedy, fifteen Hamilton Street, Somerville, New Jersey. Congratulations to the new board members and the reelected board members. And I also appreciate that you're moving all of the comment to the beginning, because sometimes it...
It kind of drives them.
It can be long, and with small children, it's challenging to get here and make a comment. I am gonna ask the board to please look at the current weapons policy for all three schools. If you're... It's hard to read the policy on the website, it's short, and most of the weapons is referring to firearms and not other weapons. And also with regards to that, there's no mention of at what point they're gonna call the police. Like, if someone brings a knife to school, are the police automatically called, or is it left up to the principal? I think it's... In the current climate, it would be better if it was more black and white, cut and dry. You bring a weapon to school, we call the police. Also, I also... There's, in the discipline policy, there's no mention of what type of discipline is documented. Currently, well, at least last school year at Vanderbeer. A child could be given... A student could be given multiple lunch detentions or any other detentions, and there is no record of it in the student's permanent record. You need to go back and forth via email with Mr. Reedy for forty-five days until you meet with him in person and look him in the eye and say, "So you gave my child detention twice," and you have no record of it. And then he goes to some super secret file and pulls these out and gives you a copy. So, I don't... I come from a healthcare background, if you didn't document it, you didn't do it. And I've spoken to Dr. Tehan about this, and he understands, he has healthcare background as well. But he says that that is the law, that they do not have to document when they give detention. And I think it should be documented. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, please. Hi, Pat Frang, two zero one Scobie Lane, Somerset, New Jersey. President of the Somerville Education Association. Mr. Garcia, congratulations.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure having you on Model U N Amnesty International. Look forward to working with you over the next year. I look forward to working with all of you over the next year. The S A is gonna do all we can to be this... To help you out as much as possible. Thank you, and happy new year, everyone.
Happy new year.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing another one, may I have a motion to close the public session, please?
So moved. Second?
Second. All right, Miss Sherwin. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? So moved. All right, moving on to the regular business of the board for organization meetings. Every year, each school board in New Jersey is required to provide ethics training to all of our board members, and it's required once a year. And we've asked our board attorney, Mr. Stern, to come and to do that this evening. We have a new board member in Mr. Garcia, we have a semi-new board member in Ms. Sherwin, so we've asked Phil if he would come and do that this evening so that not only will the board members have it, but also the members of the public that are here, and anybody that is bored enough tonight to be home watching this on television can also have their ethics training as well. So Mr. Stern does have some handouts, which he will provide to everybody in the audience as well as... Members of the board?
You. You. Where are you, Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mr. Stern, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Very good.
I am.
Luke, we have a copy for you here.
Okay, thank you.
Shall I...
Wherever you're more comfortable. If you're comfortable there, that's fine. We won't be able to... The public won't be able to see you, but that's fine.
All right, how about... Right over here?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the privilege of assisting the board with regard to legal matters. I've been asked to do a brief presentation on school ethics. And so what you have is a handout as part of that brief presentation on school ethics. Let me just get one more thing. It is indeed my privilege to be working with the Somerville Board of Education. I am at a firm called DeFrancesco Bateman, Kunsman Davis, Lair and Flown located on Mountain Boulevard in Warren. I've been doing school law for about thirty-three years now. And love what I do every year. Every year more and more. You'll notice that the title of this is celebrating the Somerville Board of Education Ethics. What you are looking at in front of you are a group of volunteer people who end up being the best trained, most... And by trained, I mean professional development, education, et cetera, on all areas of everything that is their responsibility. Tonight, I'm just gonna spend a few minutes on school ethics, but through the course of this year, we'll probably have conversations on all sorts of matters. At the end of the day, what everybody in this room is here about is teaching and learning. And if we're not celebrating teaching and learning, then we can't celebrate anything. So what a wonderful event to be able to be part of. You heard in the swearing-in of our new... Newly-elected board members, you heard statutes, you heard laws. This is Title eighteen A. This book, everything about New Jersey public education is in this book. Actually, a lot about New Jersey private education is in this book, too. And a lot about higher education is in this book. This is the statute book that the legislature wrote about all the laws. And all the policies that the Somerville Board of Education follows are derived from Title eighteen A of the education laws. Everything we do is in this book. This book is called Title six A of the Administrative Code. This book is how to do everything in this book. Okay? So the legislature passes this. This goes to the Department of Education, and the Department of Education writes regulations, six A, about how to do everything that we're talking about. Okay, so that's the law that you're hearing about when you heard eighteen A colon twelve dash one. That's... It's right in here, that's about, you know, the disqualifications and things like that. Tonight, we're talking about ethics. And I think the best way to talk about ethics is just share with you, and with apologies for reading, this is what your legislature said about why we have a school ethics law for all of our boards of education. And I quote eighteen A colon twelve dash twenty-two. "In our representative form of government, it is essential that the conduct of members of local boards of education and local school administrators hold the respect and confidence of the people. These board members and administrators must avoid conduct which is in violation of their public trust or which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated." So what we do in this room every time we get together is in furtherance of that very cherished public trust. And as you can see in this handout, which of course is yours, there's more that you can read about confidence, et cetera. Now, the next page is just noting your board of education, celebrating your board of education. And I just thought it would be helpful for the board members and members of the community to know that all board members by law... See that Roman numeral two on page three, where it says mandated orientations for board members? That is based upon Title eighteen A colon twelve dash thirty-three, where new board members must, in their first year, first term, do what's called... Have an orientation about what's called Governance One, which is dealing with skills and knowledge necessary to serve. New Jersey CUSAC, which is the Department of Education's way of evaluating our school district. H I B, which is the New Jersey anti-bullying law. Very interesting law that we'll be talking about through this year. And the superintendent of schools evaluation process. That is for first year, first term. Years two and three, those same board members have to have orientation in what's known as Governance One and Two for school finance, labor relations, and student achievement. And then reelected board members without... Within one year of reelection, have to have what's called advanced training to include updates on relevant school law, et cetera. Now, these trainings in question are facilitated by the New Jersey School Boards Association. In Somerville, we will, on a constant basis, be making sure that we're always up to speed and up to date on the latest law. We won't be waiting for the dates of your respective orientations. We'll always be talking about things that will make your jobs easier as members of the Board of Education and, you know, more efficient for teaching and learning. By the way, all the people you see in front of you, members of the Somerville community, the Somerville School community, the Somerville community, are unpaid volunteers. How would you describe the packet that most of you get each week or before each board meeting? How thick is that packet usually?
It's usually quite extensive.
Really, extensive amount of work goes into preparation for every board meeting. Every board member is required to pour through a tremendous amount of work. And it's just an important thing for everybody in the community to know about. So that's the orientations for board members. And then on page four is the crux of this presentation, which is known as the Board Member Code of Ethics. Eighteen A colon twelve dash twenty-four point one, again, right in here. And these Code of Ethics actually used to be... They used to be published by the New Jersey School Boards Association as fine practices. They were not law, they weren't statute. They were suggestions as to how to be the best board members you can be. Now it is law. It is required that board members abide by this Code of Ethics. And as you can see, there are A... There are A through J number of ethical rules. The first one, some of which are very self-evident, and I'm not gonna spend much time on any one of them. The first one is basically a reiteration of what you all just heard in the swearing-in, that you're here to uphold the laws. And that what will be done in this room and the policies that the board follows will be done through legal and ethical means. The next one, none of these are any more or less important than the other one. Listen to this. "I will make decisions in terms of the education and welfare of children." That's all. That's all we need to know. That's all we're here for, is to make decisions for the education and welfare of children. That is an ethical responsibility of the board. And you'll notice that B also includes a sampling of our anti-discrimination law to make sure that we meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C. C, "I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal." If I were to write this one, "I will confine my action to whatever," I would rewrite it, because policymaking, planning, and appraisal should never be in the same sentence as confining. I mean, that is such a huge joke. What I think the message, however, in C is to make sure that there is a very clear line between what the Superintendent of Schools is required to do to run the school district, and what the Board of Education is supposed to do to see to it that it is well-run. As a matter of fact, D says exactly that. "I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run." The people you have before you are not administrators. They have individually no authority, power, ability to affect any change individually. Everyone around this table is, as a member of this board, one individual who, when put together, is a corporate, public body that can take whatever action under the law that it deems appropriate. Let's see. G, "I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools." "I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel." And the very last one is, "I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer, also known as the Superintendent of Schools, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after the failure of administrative action." So, all of that to say the following. You have a board of education, at every board meeting, you will come here, there will be a board of education, there will be a superintendent of schools, and there will be a school business administrator at this table. The board of education and the superintendent of schools are part of the board. The superintendent is a non-voting member of the board. The board is the check and balance on the superintendent. The superintendent is the only employee the board has. The board has one employee, the superintendent of schools. All of the other employees in the Somerville School Districts are employees who have been recommended by the superintendent of schools for approval by the board. What else? Your board members do not relinquish their role as citizens, as people who have the protection of the First Amendment, when they become board members, under no circumstances. However, and this is page five, memorize page five, this will set you free. A board member may engage in politics, may write letters to the editor about political issues, including board political issues, but only unless the board says, "Please send this letter," then it's the board, right? But if it's the individual board member, they must include a disclaimer, such as the one that you see on page four. "The following statements are made in my capacity as a private citizen and not in my capacity as a board member. These statements are also not representative of the board or its individual members and solely represent my own personal opinion." That way, no one in our community listening to that example of free speech will be confused as to whether that is a board position or the individual board member's position, both of which are absolutely permitted under our Constitution and under our laws. Okay, that's a real biggie. Finally, real quick and to end, subjecting questions, comments, criticisms. The Oradel Board of Education several years ago put out an article saying, "Thirteenth things school board members wish people knew about them." And I think this would be a helpful tidbit for everybody. Number one, "We are the best-trained elected officials of the state." We'd all like to think that that's true, I hope it is. Number two, "We have to go through a criminal background check before taking office." All of this is true by law. Three, "We have to adhere to a code of ethics." You have it in your hands. Four, "We are legally required to go into executive session when we discuss certain matters." When the board goes into executive session and asks the public to leave, it does so because the Open Public Meetings Act requires it to do so. If, for example, we're talking about a personnel matter, unless the individual about whom we are speaking says, "I want this discussed in public," the board has a right to go into executive session so as not to publicly embarrass anyone, humiliate anyone, or et cetera. If it's a matter of litigation between the board and its attorney, that's the attorney-client privilege. If we engaged in those discussions in public, then the board would effectively be waiving the attorney-client privilege, which is free to do. I mean, it's your privilege to waive, but that's why often you will hear a board going into executive session. So, it is not an opportunity to try to hide things from you. In fact, the law requires, once whatever we're talking about in executive session is going to be acted on in public, then we can talk about it, okay? But until that time, the board has the right to deliberate in executive session, not to take it personally. We can't tell you, the board members cannot tell you the real reason that a teacher was non-renewed, or that a student got suspended. There are very specific and monumental confidentiality rules associated with students and staff that the board by law must adhere to. We are not the person to talk to, we, board members, are, we are not the person to talk to if you have a problem with your child's teacher. The Somerville website has a chain of command thing on the front page of it, just to give members of our school community the heads-up that the only thing a board member will do, if you see them in a supermarket, or in a public place, or at a game, or whatever, and you have complaints about staff, the only thing they will do, the only thing they can do is what with that information? Refer it to the Superintendent of Schools, who will then put it through the chain of command or whatever. So, please don't be insulted by board members who say, either, "I'm really not the person to talk to," or, "I'll be sure to tell this to the Superintendent of Schools." Board members are not permitted to take action on personnel matters, immilaterally. At school board meetings, the public comment period is for the members of the public to comment, not engage in a discussion with board members. This board is a very responsive board, but no board opens public comment for a, either cross-examination, or a dialogue about a particular issue. Public comment is for the board to hear what the public has to say and take it under advisement. And there are a few more, oh, we, board members, don't decide when school is closed on a snow day. That's not the board, that's the superintendent. And if you surveyed all the 500-plus superintendents of schools there are in the state who have snow issues, most of whom do, they would all report that that is their least favorite part of their jobs, it's awful. But board members had nothing to say about snow days. And finally, every board member that you're looking at, everybody in this room takes great pride in the most satisfying part of their job, which is having a lasting impact on the education of the children in Somerville, and helping every child reach his or her or their full potential. That's my story, I'm sticking to it. It's a pleasure. Are there any questions, comments, criticisms?
Do any-
Thank you very much.
Any board members have any questions for Phil?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody from the public have any questions? Well, allow me if you guys have any questions. No?
I won't bill you for it. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He's moving now. Alright, moving on with our business for the rest of the items now. It is recommended that items one through seven be moved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. So, at this time, I will make a motion to approve the following items. Item number one, the Code of Ethics for board members. Item number two, to establish the dates, time, and place for the Open Public Meetings Act of the Somerville Board of Education Board Meetings for the 2003 calendar year. Item number three-
Second.
Relax, we didn't ask for a second, yeah, relax. Number three, adoption of curriculum guides, textbooks, and e-textbooks. Number four, the adoption of bylaws, policies, regulations, and job descriptions. Number five, the appointment of special counsel, Fogarty and Howard, to provide professional services to the Board of Education. Number six, the appointment of our school orderer, Nissavatia LLP. And number seven, this is rescinding the resolution from the December meeting where we terminated the services of Shank Price, Smith, and King, only because their contract expired December 31st anyway. So, we act a little prematurely based upon discussions and information that we had, which at the time was okay, but we have reconsidered, and now we're just asking that we rescind that, and they're still terminated, so it doesn't matter. So, that being said, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, sir.
You're a little late. Any discussion on these items? Alright, I'll ask Mr.-
I do have a quick question. The law firm that Mrs. Stern is from is DeFrancesco Bateman, and what is this second law firm, Fogarty and Howard? Does the board have two law firms, or?
Yes, we do. Fogarty and Howard specializes in construction, so we almost entirely use them for construction issues.
For construction issues?
Correct, construction projects, working on construction contracts, any construction issues that we have.
And I guess, is that what the retainer is limited to, in terms of whatever agreement we have with them? Is it only to construction issues?
Yes, occasionally, there's a public school contract law question that I might have that might change now with the, with Mr. Stern coming onboard, but it's almost entirely for construction-related issues.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Boyce, roll call, please.
Yes, Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
He said yes, he's on mute.
Okay, I'll record it as yes. Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mrs. Dale.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwin.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
I abstain.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Moving on to item number 11, for a board presence report, you'll see that, thanks to Mr. Kimick, in December, he asked all the board members if they would provide us with the committees that they would like to be on. We also reached out to Mr. Garcia, they asked him, and so, you know, we put together the list, and before you, we have all of our committees that will be going forward from this meeting through the end of this year. So, I'd ask everybody to look at it, you know, I tried, we tried to accommodate everybody's requests, make you the chair if you so desired, and liaisons and things like that, so I hope that this meets with everybody's satisfaction, and I know that we have some very good committees and a lot of really good people on these committees, so we'll be doing some very good things this year. Moving forward, we have a motion to approve items one through four be moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. So, item number one is a member to serve as a delegate to the Somerset County Educational Services Commission, and that will be Ms. Sherwin. Item two, a member to serve as delegate to Somerset County Association of Boards of Education, that will be Mrs. Van Horn, with Ms. Sherwin as the alternate. Number three, a member to serve as a delegate to the New Jersey School Boards Association, that will be Mrs. Van Horn, with Mr. Sergiel as a delegate. And item number four, a member to serve as liaison to the Borough Council, which will be Mrs. Kraska. May I have a motion to approve those items, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pontillo, may I have a second? Alright, I'll take Mr. Sergiel as the second. Is there any discussion on those items?
I just wanted to discuss what was brought up at the beginning of the meeting by the mayor, just regarding the-
Library?
Yeah, I'm wondering when, what time those meetings typically take place, if we can gather some more information about that?
Your honor, can you provide that?
It's the fourth Thursday of the month, January, the quarters, so January, April, July, October, usually 6:30 PM at the community room at the library.
Thank you.
Thank you, your honor. Anybody else? Mr. Boyce, roll call, please.
Yes, Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mrs. Dale.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwin.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
I abstain.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Moving on, technology and curriculum instruction. Do we have any reports this evening, Mr. Fabrizi?
No report.
Report, alright, thank you very much. And now, move to approve item number one, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, that would be field trips.
Motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Van Horn, any discussion? Mr. Boyce, please.
Yes, Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mrs. Dale.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwin.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
I abstain.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Sorry, I stole your thunder there with the motion on that one.
I'm glad.
You can't do that one, can you?
Yeah, it was friendly, buddy, yeah. Alright, moving on to personnel. Resolve that the Board of Education approve and/or accept the following appointment upon recommendation Superintendent of Schools. Item number one, to approve a paid medical leave of absence for the following staff member, Timothy T. and Superintendent. May I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Ms. Sherwin, any discussion? Mr. Boyce, please.
Yes, Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Abstain.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mrs. Dale.
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwin.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
I abstain.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. And just, sometimes when members of the board abstain, people don't know why, and typically you don't have to give a reason why, but sometimes you do so. I know, Mr. Garcia, I'm gonna assume you're abstaining because this is your first meeting this evening on all those items, and Mr. Carlson abstained because he has a relative that works in the district, and as such, that relative indirectly reports to the Superintendent of Schools, and so it will be a conflict of interest for Mr. Carlson to vote either in the affirmative or the negative on that, which is why he abstained, so just, so everybody is aware of that. Alright, moving on to old business, does anybody have any old business? No? The only thing I would like to say is that all board members this evening received some letters from students at Vander Veer, who attended the opera in December, and the letters are really, really great. It appears that every child enjoyed the opera, and I know that when my younger daughter was at Vander Veer, she went to the opera, and I had the opportunity to chaperone it, and it was great. I mean, I was like a little kid, I thought it was awesome, just being there and everything, so I think those letters are really great, so please thank Mr. Reeve, and Ms. Hellwig, and Ms. Danko for taking the time to make sure we got those letters. May I have a motion to close old business, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwin, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Is there any new business at this time? No, alright. May I have a motion to close new business, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, a second? Thank you, Mr. Carlson, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Alright, at this time, the board has the need to go into executive session, so, whereas pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, the Board of Education makes flu the public from portion of a public meeting wherein the board discusses any of the matters set forth at NJSA 10:4-12B 1 through 9, now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B for the purpose of discussing the following matters, personnel. It is anticipated that the length of this executive session will be ninety minutes, and that action may be taken after the executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwin, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The board will return afterwards, and it is, now we are in executive session-
Yeah, actually, I take that back. I don't want it.
May I have a motion to go back into public session, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Van Horn. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwin. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The board will return afterwards, and it is now, we are in executive session.
I'm a legit alien from Toy Story, my favorite character. I will pay you for it. Just give me a second.
Wait, what?
The alien, the claw, you know?
Well, you got him.
I love those guys. They're my favorite. It's going to be like forty-five dollars.
All right, we're back. Look at that, that was quick.
Yeah, actually, I take that back. I don't want it.
May I have a motion to go back into public session, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Van Horn.